Oh, and pass on to your coach Casey. I don't know that I know Haley, but I know Casey did a wonderful job. And you guys are lucky to have her. All right. So any more words of wisdom to share with our crew?
Yeah, I'm sure down the road we're gonna have your girls here, but do you want to give a little update on how you guys did this weekend?
Well, I think they included it in their school reports. I don't want to steal their time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm good.
That's always interesting, and you're gonna love hearing the report. They do a phenomenal job, so we're gonna move right on to our student reps.
No one feel obligated to stay.
But you'll want to stay for this part.
You really don't need to stay. We went with a spring theme because we're hopeful thinkers. We're almost there, we're almost there.
Okay. I like that, that's encouraging, isn't it?
Right. All right, kicking it off with the high school report. We recently had polar days, which is basically a winter homecoming. We have five days of dress-up days and just some fun activities. We crowned our king and queen, Jack Casey and Addie McGeethen. And we held our annual talent show. And we had participants, both staff and students, so they had a lot of fun with that. And the high school has recently been having teacher-student shadowing, where students, or, sorry, teachers follow around SHS students for a day in order to get a better feel of the overall student experience. All right, and for the middle school, classes participated in a world day celebration, where groups made food items related to a specific country. And the FCS eight class had a bake sale where they raised $402, and the money will be donated to the relief efforts for the Australian bushfires. And the fine arts festival will be held Thursday, February 27th, at the middle school. And there'll be art from the middle school and high school students, and possibly performances by band inquire.
And elementary school students' art will be displayed as well.
Okay. And middle school drama, their winter play Stuart Little, will be performed Friday and Saturday, March 6th and 7th, at the elementary school. And here's a picture of the world day celebration. And then the bake sale.
So was that an in-house bake sale?
Yes.
People here, okay.
And finally, for the elementary school report, they recently celebrated their 100th day of school. And you can see we have a picture there that they took in the gym. And students participated in the kids' heart challenge and raised $4,600 for the American Heart Association, which is amazing. And the elementary school has recently been focusing on a theme of friendship for their students. And in the past week, they focused on random acts of kindness from one student to another. And their motto is every act of kindness can leave an imprint on someone's heart. And last week, third grade students held a very successful wax museum that was well-attended. They got to dress up and tell biographies about famous people. And JK registration for the 2020-2021 school year took place last week as well, and 69 students attended that. And here's a picture of the 100th day of school. And the American Heart Association.
That is a very good donation total, isn't it?
Really, really good. Okay, moving on to winter sports, which are actually wrapping up. Spring sports are starting in the next couple of weeks, which is super exciting. Boys' basketball had a big game Friday night against SEC. They currently have a record of 13-8, which is super good. Girls' basketball has a current record of 7-7. They won their big game against Baldwin Woodville on Thursday. Playoffs start tomorrow, and if they win, they will go on to play on Friday, and then possibly again next week if they win that. Dance, like Lauren said, finished their season off with state, took second in D3 kick and fifth in D3 hip-hop, which is amazing. Wrestling, Tyler Hansbarger and Sawyer Wilson competed at sectionals this weekend. Tyler took second at sectionals, and will be the only member of our wrestling team advancing to state for his senior year, which is awesome. Here's a picture of our boys' wrestling team. And our boys' basketball team. More sports, so girls' hockey had finished their season with a record of 8-12-2 as of last Thursday, and sadly lost in the first round of playoffs against Hutton. It was a super good game, though. Aaron Herdo scored the only goal. Boys' hockey had a home playoff game on Thursday, and they won. They'll have a playoff game on Thursday, and if they win, they'll be advancing to Baldwin next week. Cheer had their cheer state last weekend, where they competed in Madison, and did amazing, taking seventh in game day cheer.
Wow.
And the middle school, if I remember correctly, played super well, too, right?
Yep.
So you have a squad in both high school and middle school. Wow, busy gal you are.
I don't do it alone.
This hockey team. And our stars. All right, moving on to activities. So forensics has had a very successful start to our season. We have had two meets in the last two weeks. We have a meet in the nominee this week, and then sub-districts starting next week. Robotics, one of our boys' teams is advancing to the world competition in April, which is insane. And all teams have done super well. Fishing club had a super-successful year. I know they had a lot more participants this year than last year. They finished up a successful second season where they competed in about four tournaments, and they got 20th out of 120 teams at state.
Wow.
Yeah, super good. Here's our boys' robotics team. And we can fit our whole forensics team into a selfie, which I thought was kind of cute, so. All right, and wrapping things off with our special feature, we wanted to give a huge shout-out to the APE dance team. APE stands for Alternative FIAD. And they performed at our SHS talent show, and they danced to the song Timber, and ended up taking first place, so that was really fun to see. And all the students really enjoyed that, so a huge shout-out to them.
That's all we have for you. That is wonderful. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for sending a note, are you there?
Recycling?
Lori?
With you.
Sorry, we did not see, get lost there. You missed the students' reps presentation, or maybe you caught part of it.
No, I'm watching it online.
That's good, thank you Lori. All right, so, great job, you guys, you know the drill. If you have time to stay with us, great, but if you don't, we totally understand. On to Dr. Vizik, your enrollment.
Well, we've got our recycling presentations.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, skip right over that.
Do we have it pulled up on the?
Yeah, it's linked there.
Hi, I'm Danielle Kettser, I'm a junior just now. So, I don't want to. So I'm in Girl Scouts, I'm trying to earn my Golden World Award. I'm from Five to Five Three. A gold award is basically an eagle award in Boy Scouts, which you can compare it to. And this year, well, I started freshman year thinking I'd do my gold award, and I decided I wanted to do recycling. So I kind of hooked up with Ms. Donnelly and asked her about doing it, and she's my advisor for this whole project I'm doing. And then the reason I think we should recycle is, we were taught in elementary that it's good to recycle, but as a school, we don't. Because I know like when I was in elementary, we had, like, a program and everything. And I remember like always like teaching like how the parents come in and explain why we would, it's good to recycle. And then, we not recycling are polluting the earth. And then also, I've been told all the time, like, fear the generation that is to change and help the earth. But we don't have the opportunity here, like at Somerset, to help change the earth by not recycling. People that have supported me is, Mr. Anderson has supported me. Ms. Olsen back there, who came with me, has supported me through this. Ms. Donnelly, like I said, is my advisor. And then Mr. Harrick, he has helped me with the shop who built the bins for me, which I will rent sent later. And then my friends and everything have helped me, and then my family, because my mom also came with me today. So these are the bins that I made. So, my mom works at 3M, so we took pallets from 3M, and then stores around like Nurten and Somerset that had pallets that were unable to be reused, and we made them. So we took them apart, which we had in my backyard. We took them apart, built them, and the shop built these. There's, now we are at the school, there is a hole in there to be able to recycle. And then later on, we're gonna put a recycling symbol on it, where we can show that's recycling. And I know that consomians like have a hard time sometimes, because I talked to some of them, too, with things. So I thought, as advisory students, at the middle, or like getting the day or at the end of the day, we could take them out to like the bins and bring them out to the recycling station, if we use the ones that are in classics that are already in there. So that would be helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah, and then the two locations, two locations I want to put for those bins that were being made is one in the lunchroom for next year, and then one at the gym for sports events, where it'd be convenient. And then I reached out to Advanced Disposal, because I learned that is our thing. And they told us that they recycle aluminum cans, glass bottles, newspapers, steel cans, magnesium, magnesium, eh, envelopes, file, folders, and plastic bottles. And then later on, I learned that in Sacred County, they only recycle plastics one, two, three, and four. So like on the numbers of the plastic, there's like the little recycling symbol, and there's like a little number that'll tell you what one is recyclable, and you can look at what one is recyclable. And then I was thinking for next year, we could educate the students by explaining how to use them at first, and make a small presentation, which I could probably be willing to make for the beginning of next year, to explain how to recycle. And that is all I have.
Way to go, thanks for thinking for, of the school and the district, and your thoughts for what you wanted to do for your project, that's a big deal. So one recycling thing.
Yes, so I have built two.
Yep.
So I just want one in the lunchroom for like at lunchtime, for mail cartons and everything, napkins. And then one down at the gym. And then we can put like a poster, and I can like write out, finding out exactly what we can recycle, and we can put on there for everyone knows for not like mixing things that can't be in there, because you can mix recycling, I heard, with Advanced Disposal.
Okay. Yeah.
What made you think of this?
Um, I've been, I've been just like at sports events, I kind of noticed that like we don't recycle, but there's a lot of people that have recyclables that are able to recycle. And I'm just like, it's like, why don't we recycle? Because we can, and it will help the earth. And it's kind of like a big thing that I got taught in elementary, and it's like, why aren't we doing it?
So you're a junior, so this will, you'll carry this over for next year?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that. I thought we used to have the three different sized box, the garbage things, green, blue, red. No?
Oh, we still have recycling, single sorted.
Okay. Well, this is gonna be a big plus for us, thank you so much. And this is your mom, you want to introduce mom?
Yeah, Sherry.
And then I, it's nice, thanks for supporting her in this, and then you got.
I'm her troop leader. Yeah, she's also my troop leader. And then I have Ms. Olsen.
Yes.
And then Ms. Donnelly.
Thank you.
And the art teacher that doesn't let students get drinks, because they'll take a drink of water out of a water bottle, and it goes into our garbage can to lay at our landfill for 500 years, so they can have a drink of water.
Oh.
So, I send them to the drinking fountain. And I am an avid recycler. And I really think our school is doing our students a disservice by not teaching them how to recycle and how to purchase. So we can keep a green world. So, I'm all in for whatever I need to do to help out with that.
Thank you. I really thought we had the different bins. I don't know why I thought that. And thank you Shannon for supporting her in this mission, too. Wonderful. All right. Have a cookie. Just pass them around, we're happy to, let, whoever will finish them, finish them. Thank you. Wonderful job, too.
Nice job.
All right, so, on to your B, three B two, special meeting request? For March 2nd or the 9th?
Yeah, we can hit that one first. So the Market Johnson is preparing the bid documents to, for board approval. And they need to, they'd like to do this as soon as possible. So we, you know, the contractors that are hired need to get materials ordered and what have you, and we just don't want to leave them with any excuses, saying, hey, you delayed us a week or two, or what have you. Now, I was expecting this morning from Market Johnson, these bidding documents and contract sample. I got a call at 3:30, said they will not be ready. So, they said, I will have them Wednesday, we'll have them Wednesday afternoon. And at that time, I'll send them forward. Basically, what they are is a tabulation of all the different bid categories, and all the bidders, and who the low bid was, and everything tallied at the bottom. We've chosen the option for them to hold the contracts, so we don't have to manage them, because we just don't have the horsepower to manage them. So there's a standard contract that each bidder signs, or we're not dealing with 100 individual different contracts. It's a standard contract that Market Johnson manages. So what the board will have to do is approve or accept the bids. At, if, if next Monday works, which I think it works for everyone, I think. Lori, you couldn't do it on the 9th, correct?
I prefer the 2nd, yeah.
Okay, okay, and that works out good for us. So if, if we can move, if we can either have it as a special session, or maybe move that work session? Because otherwise, we'll have three meetings this month.
What, what's your preference? Does anyone have a?
Well, the 9th is spring break.
Well, I think our, our regular meeting was set for the 16th.
That's why, it was moved because of spring break, originally. Otherwise, it would have been in that first week, so.
Does that give you enough time, Tasia, for us to put a work session on next Monday? Are you okay with it?
Well, like move the work session to next Monday?
I think that's what you're suggesting.
That, that's a thought, so we didn't have three meetings this month. Or we can keep it just the way it is.
Do you have a preference, Lori?
Well, I'd prefer to leave it the way it is.
Okay, so.
We don't have a just one-week turnaround.
So, well, we're ending up with a one-week turnaround between the work session and the regular session in March, too, as it is. So.
And we're fine with that, too, we'll leave it the way it is.
All right, so we'll just schedule the special session for the 2nd.
The 2nd, correct.
After the, after the regular schoolwork meeting?
No.
As of the work session?
No, we're gonna put, leave the work session on the 16th.
Oh, the work session on the 16th, okay.
Right, and again, I'll get these documents out to you. And if you have any questions, please ask. I think the only question you may have is where you'll see maybe in one or two instances where a little bidder didn't get the, didn't get the work, and there's reasons for that, and I'll have explanations for that also.
So they're not bringing in the, I'm sorry, they're not bringing in the bid packets for us to review? They've already done them, they're coming forth with their recommendations.
But you'll see those, you'll, you'll have them.
Just like they did the previous time.
Right, you'll have them, you'll see them, you can examine them. And if you have questions, you can contact me, and then I get answers for you if I can't answer them. Bruce, want, what, anything to follow up?
I still want to see Market Johnson's after we get all these bids, and I want to see their final general conditions number. Because that's a, that's a big number, and I think we need to still look at that one, because there's, I just think there needs to be a little more digging and.
Is it unusual that they would have to provide that? Or is it a request we're making especially? So it's not anything unusual?
That's normal, I mean, they have their staff in there, and there's just, I mean, it's from day one, there were some numbers, I just want to.
Right.
Now that we have all the numbers, let's get them all together and see what their, their chunk is actually gonna be, instead of just a ballpark.
So what'll happen, tomorrow we'll have the site bids at 2 o'clock. And then Wednesday, we have an alternate, alternate meeting, which, you know, there's, in several of these bid categories, there's alternates, and that was to bring the price down within scope. And so we'll be talking about which ones of those we think will be the, you know, prioritize alternates. You know, and I think I mentioned in my weekly report, I think, you know, one of the first things we have to look at is that entryway, you know, off of I, over at the middle school. And then that will go to the POC committee on Monday, where we'll hash it out a little bit more, and that's where we'll talk about general conditions a little bit more at that time. So before we get the guaranteed price from them, I think there's quite a bit of work we have to do on those general conditions to make sure that we're getting a big bang for it.
Does that give you enough time by this?
Are we approving the, the GMP next week? Or are we just saying, you can write a letter of intent to these contractors?
Right now, I think we're, we're just, this is the way I'm following it, is we're just looking at the bid packages and not the, the whole piece. I don't even know if we'll do the site, because they may not have that broken down yet.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't want to approve a GMP next week without, I mean, if we just talk to them about general conditions on Monday, we can't, there's no way they could adjust the number.
Right, I'm right there with you, because I think there's some numbers in there we need to.
I mean, we could approve a GMP by the 16th, after we meet with them, to say this has got to get changed.
And that'll work still, that gives them the working?
If we tell them, I mean, if we tell them we're good on the numbers that we have, hey, yeah, these bidders look good, we have no problem with the bids, we just have to go over the final.
That's the big thing right now, is getting the bidders, the contractors on board, to start moving. Then we'll know the project total.
So it's good to have it on the 2nd rather than the 9th, to get that portion of it going?
At least they can tell people to go, get things ordered.
Yeah, they're pushing for the 2nd.
Okay.
They'd like to, so, again, I'll get as much prep work out to you, Ken, as soon as they get me that information. Again, they told me I'd have it this morning, and 3:30 they called and said we won't have it till Wednesday afternoon, because they're still wriggling out some of the bidders and qualifying and what have you. And they had to re, they're rebidding the high school electric, because it really wasn't clear in the specs. Shouldn't change the numbers, but it will change the scope of the bid package. So that'll happen tomorrow also.
I'm glad somebody picked up on it, that there was an issue for.
Well, you can, when you go through the bids, you can tell the, you know, if there are bidders out of whack. You know, if everyone's about 1.4 million, someone comes in at 600,000.
Something's missing.
Something wrong there, and the alternates are fuzzy, so they had to clean that up. They just felt it was best to do that. And then there's a couple areas where they didn't get bids, they weren't high areas, but they just had to go beat the bushes for some bidders on a couple of these areas, which, I think a couple of overhead doors.
So when they found that area, they were able to give it to each one to know that that was more clearly delineated?
Yeah, they just rebid it, and they'll have the same people bidding on it again. So, but it'll be broken down.
Sorry, what time on Monday?
6:30, like, typical, general, 6:30?
Because I think we're, we're gonna have a POC meeting before that also.
Yeah, I don't know if we have one on the calendar yet.
No, we don't, it was for the 16th, but we'll move it up to, we'll have to change the date on that one. Okay, I'm out of sequence here, so we're all set with next Monday.
Why did I mess you up?
No, that's okay, I have my own numbering system here, it wasn't that order here, but.
Wink and flex.
Well, I was around Catherine, and this is just a little general information here. We're, for the last year or so, we've been looking at how to, not rebrand, but come up with a standard logo for the district. And we've used so many different types of Spartans. We even had, if you look on our mission statement up there, we've had the bridge theme going. We're, we're looking at something that we can use as a standard logo, that when people order jerseys or shirts or whatever, this is the Spartan logo. And I believe we had a contest at the high school.
Throughout the district.
Throughout the district. We sought some external input. We've talked about this a couple of times at our administrative team meetings. And if you look at those, those emblems there, there, there's a little variation in each one, doesn't really come out, stand out that much in these copies and that. But, you know, with our equity work, you know, the emblem we have been using, or some of the variations of the Spartan, really are not representative of, you know, our culture, our school, or the makeup of our student body. So we're looking at something. We're looking at something that we can all rally around, and I think we're getting there, but I think the general consensus administratively is that we haven't found it yet. And the second sheet is some of the comments that you've gotten from, I think those are from the public, Shannon?
Yep, so in our weekly communication that Tasia sends out to all families in the district, we had put that logo actually in the paper in front of you, the one that's on the bottom left. Again, as Mark said, there's slight variations to each one. That was the one that was kind of a combined vision from a middle school student and a high school student, that had kind of come together and put, put, you know, that together. So we ended up putting just a Google form connected to our Spartan scoop, that anybody that wanted to click on it could just add, hey, what do you think? Yay or nay, like it, don't like it? You know, it was, it was interesting. I mean, some people were like, yep, others, nope, and everything in between. So, as Mark kind of said, we've had a lot of discussions, you know, administratively, just trying to look at our current logo, and does that still fit within kind of who we are as a district in terms of, you know, one example we kind of keep giving is in our gym. You know, up on the wall is a huge white face Spartan. And that just does not, that no longer represents all of our community within our district anymore. So, that was kind of where the discussion started, as Dr. Vizik said, kind of out of our equity work, and just kind of doing some analysis, and just kind of seeing what one in the district we wanted to take a look at. And we landed just having some discussions about the logo. As he said, I think what's in front of you may or may not be, you know, a final decision, but we kind of felt at this point, since we've been having a lot of discussion about it, bringing it to this table, just to at least kind of bring you up to speed of the discussions we've been having. Certainly open to additional input, but wanted to at least kind of bring you in on the conversation of kind of where we are. And this has been, I don't know, months of discussion, gathering some input, and so.
So anyway, just FYI, and that, and you'll, you'll see more, because we don't think we're there yet. And again, we, you know, we want something that people can rally around for the, for the district. And again, it's all about trying to come up with one logo that is Somerset schools, so. You know, back on the construction piece, I mentioned Wednesday, we'll be going through the alternates, but then on Thursday morning, we'll be meeting with the village to talk more about the construction plans and that entryway to the site down by the, the middle school there. Let's see, enrollment-wise, I'm just gonna, Maria, I'm just gonna put it on the list here.
That sounds fine.
Enrollment-wise, year-to-date, we're up, year-to-date, we're up three kids from last month, we're down four. So we're still trending a little bit ahead of the game. So that's all I have on my report.
All right, so, I was just coming, this, this little survey, it's a, ouch.
That's why, you know, again, even amongst our administrative team, we're like, well, it's great we had the contest, the kids did the work on this and that, it's just nothing grabs us right now. And so we're just reaching, right, you know, we, it's not, you know, this is I heard have to do right now, but it's a process we're going through to try and come up with something that really fits the district. And again, you know, equity throughout schools right now is such a big thing. And, and we really want to do things that are representative of our, you know, of our schools.
Sure. All right, so did anyone have any questions for Dr. Vizik on either of those, any of his portion there? And then we always have Dave's financial reports, there's a link on here, so hopefully you know where to go for that, onto the website, onto the school board members. We don't have anyone here tonight from the bridging Somerset.
Yeah, I can report on it, we had our first meeting, I mentioned this in the, in my weekly report, that, you know, we had our first meeting last Thursday, we had 20, 22 people or so show up. We had about, or six to eight that, because of scheduling, couldn't make it. So we're expecting 25 to 30 people showing up. And it was a, we spent two hours reworking the, the bridging Somerset mission statement, because again, they could choose to use that one, or rework it for what's happening today, and they chose to rework it. And I just sent you out, I just got a chance this afternoon to put all the notes together from our session on Thursday, so I sent, sent it all out to Google Doc there. We did a, we did an environmental scan, which is really what's going well in the community, what's not going well, what should we change? And so we generated some ideas out of there, then we worked on the mission, and went back and forth a little bit, and they had a full two hours of discussion, really good discussions on things. And so we'll take this work here now, the next meeting, which will be March 19th, we're trying to stick to the third Thursday of every month, to refine the mission statement, and then really narrow these pieces down into a SWOT analysis, where we look at strengths and weaknesses. strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats out there, and strengths and weaknesses are usually internal, so what are, what what's our strengths in the district or the community, weaknesses, and then what's acting on us as, as far as opportunities and threats out there? And from then, they'll determine action steps, or strategies on how to deal with these, and if you look at our last Bridging Somerset group that we did three years ago, you know, Rivers and Roads was born out of that, this, I think the city park piece was born out of that, the branding, and our referendum, a lot of the work was done on that through that group also, as far as building the support for it. So again, I don't, I can't tell you right now what will be the final items that the groups will be working on, but I think from this, you can kind of see there's some common themes running out there, and yet to be determined, we're planning on four, you know, four or five meetings, and then setting groups on their path to do some work.
I'm glad that you have the interest still.
What's that?
And it's great that you still have the interest for people that are willing to do that.
I think, you know, at this point in time, right now, you look at the village, the school district area and all that, and, you know, we need some good positive things coming, coming out of that and coming together right now, it's, it's time.
It's always good, it's always good for a community.
So, that's all I have there, so.
Thank you, and did you want a board member on there, is Lori on there?
No, I think Patty Jo said she was gonna commit to doing that, but she wasn't.
And I wasn't clear if you wanted the board to sit back and let you present to us.
No, no, we actually have, we have, we're trying to get one elected official from each group, and I think Patty said that she would be that person, Tim Witzman's from the township, and I don't think we have anybody from Star Prairie that came, so.
Okay.
And the city had a meeting that night, or the village had a meeting that night, so their representative can come.
So maybe we can get a backup from Patty Jo, should she not be able to?
Whoever.
Okay. Anybody here willing to be that backup? And then coordinate with Patty Jo, I can see.
I was in the last group, I don't need to be in the next.
I think we're allowed only one, one per household.
One per household, one of your five.
Part's there.
All right. And then moving on to CISA eleven, I sent you guys the, years ago, we used to get these little facts, not little, they were about a half inch thick, but they shared all the data, or not all of it, we can never share all of it, but great points of data, that compared us to districts across the state. You would be able to pick out from their districts that were comparable to us, districts that are only in our conference, or neighboring districts that are not necessarily in our conference, because it, it was a nice tool to use for comparisons, and now because the two companies that used to do these data collections have joined, having it available online is actually faster than the old booklet used to be, but I sent that link out, I believe I included you, Dr. Bezek, on that as well. It's a great resource for seeing, well, how do we compare on statistics, enrollment, participation, your teacher levels, who's at what school's administrative pay, various requirements, and not necessarily requirements, but measuring statistics or data. So I hope that was of interest. There were two interesting articles in the St. Paul paper this weekend, and one was a person pointing out actually how as, I, I think I'm gonna stay off that one, I was gonna comment on it, but I'm afraid it'd be too political, and I don't want to do that.
Well, unless it has to do with CISA.
No, it doesn't, so, well, it, it would, but it'd be a stretch, so I'm not gonna go there. So, because one of the things we covered with CISA is someone was asking specifically for a specialist with, to cover dyslexia, and the demand isn't there, and then another was in reference to shared services for psychologists. There are schools all over, there are more and more services required to address special special circumstances, special needs, and we're all in that same boat. We are fortunate to be able to have our staff here that we, and, but we also are fortunate to have access to CISA and share that, if we need to share that need for a service or that service provider. So that was the gist of the CISA this month. Community education.
So, on the website, there's a link to what's offered for spring two thousand twenty, and it, the registration is up, and right now it has long-term care, Hena, egg decorating, women's health, improve your run, Hudson Food Walk, Western Wisconsin volleyball registration, spring hunter safety, and one thing, we're partnering with Amory on a couple different trips to go to different shows.
Me!
And things like that, so. The website's really good, and it's really visual.
Is there a link on our home school district?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's under community ed.
Great. Any questions for Catherine? Lori, are you able to share with, anything with us on the memorial scholarship?
Yes, I am. Saint Louis and Somerset have one left to turn in their application for the more than thirty scholarships managed by the Somerset Memorial Scholarship Fund. The application is available on the district's website, under the community tab, under the information heading. Click on the Somerset Memorial Scholarship Fund, which will bring you to our page, where a student may click on the link to the online application form. The rubric is also available there. The applications are due by noon on Wednesday, March fourth. The Somerset Memorial Scholarship Fund also is participating in the St. Croix Valley Give Big fundraiser on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. So if anyone is able to donate to the Somerset Memorial Scholarship Fund, we could go to the St. Croix Valley Give Big website and do so online.
Great, thank you, Lori, did anybody have any questions for Lori? Thanks Lori, for participating in that, and it sounds like you've got a really active committee too. As far as other, is there anything that we? Anyone else? All right, then let's walk on or move on, we don't have, I didn't receive any pink slips or red slips, so did any of you have anything more you wanted to add or say?
For the meeting, or what you're talking about right now?
No, for an open comment, if you have something you wanted to share with us, can you grab one of those red cards up there?
Oh, I thought we were already.
You are, you're a boundary, right?
What, a frolic, right?
Yes, okay.
Right, yeah, the boundary proposal.
Then you are right, you're right, we're coming. All right, I'm sorry if I scared you.
Sit here for an hour.
I'm so, I'm so sorry, I didn't realize that. All right, so let's move on then to the educational delivery, well, do we want, would you guys be okay if we moved six ahead of five? So that we could address their, why they're here? Because I didn't realize that we were holding them up, they would be six A one.
Are we just gonna approve the calendar?
No, I'm not okay, let's go back to five and approve the calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Five, educational delivery and learner connectedness, onto five A one, recommend the school board approve the twenty, I'm looking for a motion to recommend the school board approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty.
We'll make that motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
Thank you, Catherine, any questions on that one?
I'd just like to thank the people who worked on the calendar for taking the concerns of the professional development day in April and making those changes, thank you.
Thanks Lori, will you pass that along to, you're gonna email Trish and say that, if she, because I think she was part of that process too?
It was the administrative team.
Great, great, thank you. So, any other questions on the calendar? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We've got that, thank you Lori, we've got the calendar approved then. Five B, open enrollment, are you looking for something there specifically?
On what?
The open enrollment.
But this is just the, what we have to turn into the state. As far as, it, it doesn't change that, that much, we have to look at our, you know, different categories and what space is available. Really, we want to set it up so we can continually take in more students and that, we don't want to cut ourselves short, but there are some areas that we really have to watch ourselves, that if we can't provide services for some students that were full, you know, we can deny that, but we really want to be careful and cognizant that we're meeting all kids' needs the best we can, but there are areas that we just can't take more.
Okay. All right, then now we can move on to six, are you guys okay with that, moving on to six A one? I'm sorry, yes Lori?
Dr. Bezek, isn't it required that the school board make a motion to formally approve these numbers?
No, I, really off the top of my head, I can't remember if we, if we had a motion passed, or we just had to have this, we just had to turn this into DPI. Do you have any direct?
According to Abby, that just needed to be shared with the board.
And hold on it.
Well, I think, as Tasia mentioned from Abby, that we just had to inform the board of what this is. It, it wouldn't hurt if you wanted to make a motion and approve it, but this is the document that they'll hold our feet to the fire with, in case there's any disputes, if people want to get into the district, so.
So what's your preference, Lori, would you rather see us have a motion?
Well, I think we need to, so I'll make a motion to accept the open enrollment document as presented.
Okay.
And Bob will second that, all those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you Lori. So we had a motion, a second, and it passed unanimously to support as presented.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to six A one. I one, looking for a motion along the lines of one there.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna entertain a motion, and then have discussion as far as whoever's here to talk, is that?
I'll make a motion to deny the frolic petition.
Okay, because I was gonna ask you, if that's the way you were gonna go, I was gonna give you our recommendation.
Do we need to do each one separately, or can we do them all?
I think we should do each one separately, but I was just gonna offer a recommendation to you before you, you did that, but I would say, you know, it's typically been our policy to deny any departure from our district.
And then they can talk, and then.
And then, and then once you have that.
We'll listen.
So you said the motion?
Yes, I mean, I want to be denied.
So imagine we have some conversation to be had.
Yep.
So it's already a dead issue?
No, it's not, but in order to talk about it, we need to put it on the floor. But that way too.
We can.
Two fake names, I heard. Is it my turn to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have those? First, the way I'm gonna handle this is explain who we are, where our land is, and why we want to do this. And I think I'm gonna start it with, no, please.
Why did you do that?
So, there's six kids that own this land, and I'm the trustee. I live in Menominee, I'm a businessman in Menominee, I produce dog prey videos on the internet, and have since nineteen eighty-two.
So are you Carol's brother?
What?
Would you be Carol's brother? Or is Carol a cousin, or?
Brother. Megan? Changed her name.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
A problem. This is Chuck, he lives north in Richmond, he's retired, but his daughter is a teacher.
Megan, my sister too.
Yeah, Megan's our sister, he changed her name from Carol to Megan.
Okay.
And then I have a brother Terry that lives over in the cities, I have a sister that lives in Idaho, and I have a sister that lives in Colorado, my parents died ten years ago. So this land that we're talking about isn't gonna cost you guys a lot of money, or any money, because there's no house on it. And I'm gonna show you these, this is the first time these have been out of a lockbox, and it's our deed from eighteen fifty-five, signed by Franklin Pierce. And I will show you that, so you understand that I'm not a developer, and we're not trying to develop this thing. There's no house, my parents sold the land, or the farmhouse off of our property twenty-five, thirty years ago. We use it for hunting, and that's what we do. Do you guys know where the farm is, do you have any idea at all?
I do.
Do you?
I know where Atlanta is, we, we all have.
County Road B?
Yeah, I drive by it every.
Okay, so it's surrounded on three sides by the Hudson School District. And the Hudson School District has bus service there, there's no house on it. The reason that we're doing this is because my sister, Megan, grew up in the farmhouse, Chuck and I were, when my parents lived in Canada, that's, we were Americans, but we grew up with high schools, everything in Canada.
Oh wow.
Came down to the United States, but Megan went to, she grew up there. And all of her friends around our land were from Hudson when she grew up, except when she got to high school, all of her friends went to Hudson, she came here. And that was really, really hard on her. So for the, it, it was really hard, one of the reasons is she changed her name, but well, I won't, I won't go into that, but for the last twenty-five years, the land is banded in forestry. Where we can hunt on it, we don't let anybody else hunt on it. We got a decision to make, there's a possibility that one of our family members would build a house on it, they want to go to, they want to go to Hudson. So it's, at this point in time, it costs you guys nothing, we're not taking students out of your pocket, and I know you get so much money, because I used to be involved with our school district. But if we have a family member build a house there, we want him to go to Hudson, we don't want the same problem that we had with our sister. It's just not fair. When all of their friends over there are from Hudson, the school buses go by there, go into Hudson, it just so, I mean, that's why we're here. I understand what open enrollment is, but I just heard you folks vote on it, my brother that lives over in the cities, Terry, I don't even remember what the school district he was involved in, they had open enrollment for a while, but they shut it down. So that's, for us, that's betting on the cup. And I really don't want to do that, I would rather that you folks just let us go our way. If we were gonna sell something in the last hundred and sixty-four years, it would have been out of our land, been out of our pocket. I mean, my, my grandfather was the town chairman for St. Joseph's Township for fifty-three years. We're part of the community, but I think we should be able to I think we should be able to pick where we want to go, it's not like we're up here asking to change something up here, when we're surrounded on three sides by the Hudson School District. So, let me see if I forgot anything. Megan's fifty years old now, a little over fifty years.
She's a little older than that.
What's that?
She's a little older than that, she's five. She's actually a little older. Tell her hello for me.
Do you have questions?
Want to go with her?
Yes.
Do you have questions, does anybody have questions on this?
So this. Can you guys pull up the map?
Yes, is this the map?
Yeah, okay, so you can see, so.
Is the green Somerset?
Green is Somerset, and really, there's two sides of this island of Hudson that's, that's in there, so really, you know, it's, it's us to the south, it's us to the west, it's us to the, kind of the north, so.
North, west too.
Yeah.
So my sister did the back work, background work on this, because it's too complicated for me to do, but she couldn't come, for my, to come and do that, I'm, I'm speaking from her, when she said that it's, we're surrounded by three sides from from Hudson. And that there's, and that there's land, north of us. Called a Hudson.
Yeah, there's some, some, some to the north and some to the east, but the, the south and the, the west are definitely ours.
But there's no house on it.
Correct, there, there isn't now, and I'll just, if I can just kind of throw some things out here. You know, eventually this land's gonna be developed, whether it's ten years, twenty years, whatever, and for us to give up a tax base, it's just not good policy for a district to give away their future. And that's basically what we're doing here, is by giving away our district, and we get hit every year by people, some are developers and what have you. You know, open enrollment is a, is a, is a great option, that's our district, so we will run buses down there if there's kids there. We'd be more than happy to do that, so they have access to the school here. But as far as my recommendation, and again, it's been basically policy that we just don't divvy up our district, because again, we get we get it from the east, and we get it from the north, and we get it from the, we get it from the south, and it's, there is a, there is a way to
But we'd rather you didn't take it, to be totally truthful.
I can tell you right now that if you just turn us down, I'm gonna go to Madison or the.
And we know you will.
So we're gonna do it.
And we.
And we do, you know, again, every year we go down there for that too.
I want to do it.
My own sister petitioned to get out of our, our school district, she went to school here, she did the same thing, that line on the south side of our district is Hudson Strip, back and forth, and showers is totally isolated, it's Somerset in the middle of Hudson. So I get it, but I also recognize that if we keep letting whoever wants to move to Hudson, move to Hudson, we're hurting our district, and we're overpopulating when they've already rebuilt too, so it's a trade-off both ways, and I'm sorry.
We met the Hudson School Board, just because they met before you guys did.
Yeah.
And they, they agree, they'll take us.
We do too, when people want to come in, I feel, it's basically.
I want you folks to know, we're not
We totally understand.
Trying to, I've already met her, and I feel very strongly after I saw what happened with Megan, when I said she changed her name because of the issue she had, she did.
I'm sorry to hear that, I, she was great, she was.
One thing that I've suggested when we're at these hearings down there, that I've told people to I would act, I would entertain, you know, with board approval, is to sit down with the Hudson District, and you want to balance out some lines here, let's do some, some horse trading here on, on property that, you know.
We've done that before, swat.
You know, just so, keep a balance, because you can see, I mean, there's islands, there's islands here that, it's just not good for people. You know, you know, just so, keep a balance, because you can see, I mean, there's islands, there's islands here that, it's just not good for people.
Are you telling me that prior to going to Madison, you would be willing to sit down with Hudson?
And I've asked them before, too.
Would they do it?
They haven't entertained that option yet.
Well, maybe if we went to them.
Well, you know, if we could balance out something to straighten out lines and create a, a balance, I think we'd be.
You're open to that.
They do, they do swaps. So if there's someone there that would swap this way, and it's the same, same amount of acreage, that's definitely much more workable than just saying, yes, you can go. We've done that with new returns before.
Understand that.
Can I call for a hook, please?
Sure. So we have a motion on the table, and a second to deny the frolic petition to detach from Somerset. Um, all those in favor of the denial, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Lori. Any opposed to the denial? Motion passes as a denial, and I am sorry, I totally understand why you want.
We kind of thought it coming in, we implicitly anticipate going to Madison.
And we can honestly say these are, that's likely, yeah.
Well, here's, here's what my take on this will be, oh, when, when, right off the get-go, with not a word being said, you made a motion to deny. That hurt.
And it's not in our school district.
I know, I understand that.
I'm sorry.
But we had to pitch our story. Thanks for your time to.
So you said Carolyn, Megan, Carolyn, Megan is in Menominee?
Yep. No, Colorado.
Colorado?
Yep.
Oh, my husband would be jealous. Okay, let's go.
Colorado Springs.
Okay.
Her boy went to the Air Force Academy.
I'm gonna check in with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to six A two one. Looking for a motion.
That would be the same recommendations to deny.
Let's see, I'll make the motion deny six A two and six A three.
And four?
I don't want to deny.
You gotta do them all separate?
Do them separate.
Okay, so we'll do this as six A two, denying.
One second.
Thank you, Catherine, thank you, Bruce. We have, um, anyone here from the Steiger? Is that how you say it, Steiger?
Steiger, yeah, no, there's no one here.
All those in favor of the denial of detachment for the Steigers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to deny the Steiger petition to detach. Looking for a motion to deny the white, or approve or deny the white petition.
Recommendations to deny.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Thank you, Catherine.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. We have a motion on the table to deny the white petition to detach. Do we have anyone here? No one here for discussion there? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to deny the white petition to detach from the Somerset School District. Onto item six A four one. Looking for a motion to.
Approve, make the motion to approve a Nado petition.
Thank you, Bob. And do I have a second?
I'll make, I'll second you.
Thank you, Bruce. We have a, a motion and a second to approve the Nado petition to detach from the New Richmond School District and attach to the Somerset School.
This is the one that's. Just, yeah, just a comment there that, um, the county is checking in with DPI, I think, right now, because they believe they're already in our district, so this may be, uh.
Move point?
Yeah, it, but still, we want to approve it, but we'll get, uh, we'll get that information, because they think it's a mistake. And if it is a mistake, there's some tax revenue that we probably should.
Oh, gee, that'd be the good.
This is squally.
So.
Right, this is squa, isn't that squally?
Or is it basally?
That is a bas, this one. Anyway, so just so you know a little bit of the backstory there, so.
Okay. So we have a motion on, on the table in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, Lori, any opposed? So the motion passes, excuse me, passes to, uh, the board will approve. No, I have to say this right, will deny the Nado.
No, no. Nado.
Approve.
Approve the Nado petition.
Approve the Nado petition to detach, that's from the New Richmond School District.
And attach.
And attach to the Somerset School District. I'm sorry for the confusion there. All right, that's a hard one to, um, try and defend, but I, we can't afford to, to give away property at this point.
It's still hard to defend.
I, I think it is, looking at someone in the face and saying that, I think it is. Six B, policy sixty-seven twelve. We're looking for a motion to approve the adoption of policy sixty-seven twelve as presented. Anyone interested in?
Oh.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Catherine. Any questions on it?
Dave is here, he can answer any.
Any additional? We've had this on for a while here.
No, it, I, we found some language and tweaked it a bit, and you can see the paragraph we added. I'm just looking to see if it met your, your desire and your expectation for what you wanted to see. You guys okay with it? Yeah.
Lori, can you hear that?
No, I did not.
Um, he said he looked at, they've done some tweaking in the language, and I'm gonna assume you read through it, and you made the motion, so did you?
Oh, absolutely.
Did you have any?
Yes.
So you're agreeable with the changes proposed in it?
Absolutely.
All right. So any other questions for Dave? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So that motion carries to adopt the policy sixty-seven twelve as presented. So then we're on to, uh, item seven, the consent agenda. Is there anything there?
Can I make a motion to approve consent agenda? A, minutes, one, two, three. B, board bills, one. C, personnel update, one and two. D, girls hockey cooperative renewal. E, statement of bold invoices.
Second.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, Catherine. Um, there were some grammatical, not grammatical, some corrections, minor corrections, that did not impact or change motions made, uh, that Lori had suggested to Tasia, that did not change the tone of the motion. Just clarified, she had, there was a misspelling she picked up on wold, and there was another one on, actually putting in some words Lori had made the motion, so it did not change the direction of the motion. So, uh, that was on the minutes for one of those three. I'll have to go back and look, but it did not change any of the motion made, just was more clear.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seven A, one, two, three, B, one, C, one and two, D, one, and E, one. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? The motion carries, and so in the minutes, as we do these, we just put it all in there as they are, great. So we're on to item eight, the general information, our March meetings now, we're gonna, we're gonna add the second as a, uh, special meeting, and that would be open, and then you will let us know after talking with the interim.
Correct, I'll have a discussion with Trevor tomorrow.
All right. Um, so we've got the second, the sixteenth, and the twenty-third. The sixteenth for the work session, and the twenty-third, and now those are just one week apart, and I know we were trying for two, but for the timing purposes here. So I hope that still can work for everyone. We're on to eight B, ones are on the table. Catherine, did you have anything?
Yeah, um, I thought of it when all of these recommend, all these, uh, approve and deny, uh, detaching. Did you ever follow through on if we can recover expenses?
Yeah, so, well, so Patty's off, Patty's office hasn't gotten back to me, but as I mentioned in my report there, I was very surprised at, uh, the PAC meeting where we have thirty-some, thirty-five districts represented. There was probably about four or five districts that, oh, yeah, we've been involved somehow, maybe a few years ago, what have you. It's, it's been Hudson to Richmond and us.
And.
Yet.
Well, probably Osceola, too.
Well, Osceola, Mark wasn't there, though, but, uh, I was really surprised. I thought this was a more common piece.
Or you get your, your population density is.
Yeah. So, I'm kind of sensing that, you know, it's, it's not gonna go too far, but Patty's office hasn't gotten back to me yet either on if they've got any legs with this, because other parts of the state may be seeing the same thing.